Section of Van Nuys County Commissioners Court order on Tuesday, April the seventh at nine oh seven AM. Now, a form is established with all the members present with the exception of Commissioner Wex. He is not here today. So, a form is established on the order. Item number two, discuss and consider approving or amending the first amended proclamation declaring a local disaster impacting. As you know, you have before you on copy of the first amended proclamation declaring a local disaster that I signed April the first. Once I declare a local disaster proclamation, then it is good for seven days. The next seven days will be our Michael Commissioners Court have approved it as a court. So, that's the only item that's on the agenda today. Do we want to approve of our amendment? The order, so that's what, and that's the only item that's on the agenda is the discuss and consider approving or amending the first amended proclamation declaring a local disaster.
Seven days, that'll be the next meeting on fifteenth, yeah?
I declared it on the first fifteen, and I believe that it expires tomorrow night.
So, it'll be seven days from tomorrow night?
No, seven, yes, because this order, this order here is dated that it will expire on the fifteenth? Yes, the first one, yeah, they said I hereby declare a local disaster, state of disaster, they're going to continue to April the fifteenth. So, and we have a Commissioners Court on the fifteenth. So, if you, if you approve of this, you would be approved it to fifteen until April the fifteenth, April the fifteenth will be. Any questions or discussion on the end?
If you have any.
Yeah, Bob is joining on the. Oh, Bob, is there anything? Did you, you made a rest of the board?
Okay, well, thank you very much, first of all, thank you.
Okay, Bob, is there any way you can, we were having trouble. Sit by getting a microphone and put a wristband.
Put the speakers on, microphone.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Bob. Bob, speak as loud as you can, please.
Okay, all right, but I shop here and I try to force it to some followers as well. But, following the business, thank you very much for letting me join in and talk with guys this day. You know, this is why I keep asking around the state and other areas, trying to work our way through this thing. And we're about to get out here, establish that we're doing so that we separate ways, we don't try to curtail lines of the base of a burden house thing. And from that, we hopefully set happens. The idea of what the time and then conversations with the governor who's in the government is that this issue of social distancing is the best tool we can. When it comes to the future, we accept the fact that there are sixty vests out there that can't be used. But they're making a position there, aren't they? And so, we're maybe getting close to overcoming that, but some of the old doctors said actually using it could resolve. I hope that's what's being placed. But in the meantime, the idea of the shutdown, are you trying to minimize the hotspots for transmission of the COVID-19? Whether, when that was a lot behind the initial of places, really ain't control of this one that gets decided. But he didn't let us on as far as the others, and create a better nation. And so, with that, not talk about what's happening with what we're doing and how we can do it. And what I think happens in the other areas around the state is when it's kind of set to, okay, how do we choose the social distancing? Without hearing the attitude of people, the courage of the citizens, and that's why I'm looking down, not here, we shut it down and not shut another down. Because one has good, little problems, social distancing, everyone has their own. We tend to go back to this, whether we have it fair, spread the pain of our people, let them face those risks, and shut down, shut down ourselves. And what I think will help our cops most is all things shut down of this, that. But that sort of threatens people, we ain't forced process. I mean, we certainly, open, should have taken opportunities for spreading, that's what I've heard, schools and processes. I mean, doing the people in there, that's, that's part of the problem, of spreading, that people going into a candy store or to a dollar shop. Or not playing golf, or just, what we do, give people half time in the sunshine. That's one of the things that, that, through reverberating on those people getting outside, doing exercise, and getting outside now. There's something that that will affect their system, and that's a good thing, and they do agree on some of them. And so, ultimately, what we're doing is, and definitely how we do this, not just promises and efforts, but use, I mentioned, because one that I talked in, due boost of discretion. Is we had all our stuff, and everything was a advantage or a sentence, a proof, a solution. We would have a real disaster, I'm additional, so reach discretion. And I think that the government did more counties, cities, use discretion, that they have, that they're, you, very well, they did want to do a one-size-fits-all, the state of Texas. I believe we all agree that those one-size-fits-all, the state of Texas, just never worked. Throughout the state, between the rural and the basic, so he wanted to give discretion where it made sense. And I agree, I mean, one thing, in a small part, but I mean, if that was, where we could be standing, facing each other, or in the face, help close offices. But out here, where we are, it shouldn't be a problem. There's no way, anyway, here, other people. And any problems the same way here, in schools, if people were to, it's not like dollar shops, but schools, thanks for that nature. I think the smart thing is that we do the best, better sort of people that uses common sense. And like that is the reason we don't want to do it, or the collateral while it's, they're coming, they shut down to create what the governor said, and others that was trying to correct that. We can't have a pure divorce in the bottom, and that's what we have to deal with there. So, I would only extend this, like, is you give, give some consideration to, is this really necessary? Because we got it together, the service, much larger time, yeah, people don't, that's the only, need to make one business go out, this is, this probably gave another to out. And hopefully, we will get through it here in this next month, at least have a pattern set up, so if there's a right, we're going to fight, we push a couple of times, uh, we do it, we do it, we say. And so, that, that's my success. Appreciate your business, and appreciate the opportunity to serve you guys.
Okay, if you'll stay on the phone, anyone have any questions for Bob?
Yes, Senator Powell, thank you so much for talking to us this morning, and I appreciate you very much. I think we're trying to address one issue at a time, and I think today, we're trying to address physical activities. And I do, I do somewhat agree, we need to, we are to expand our physical activities. And I think I've got a proposal here, Judge, I don't know how you would react to it, but I would like to add in section seven. To our order, it says, it says engaging in other essential outdoor activities, provided the individual complied with social distancing requirement sixteen. For example, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, golfing, kids, unless this order supersedes, unless the governor's order supersedes this order. I don't know, it may supersede, the governor's order may supersede this order. But that's, we can talk about, I mean, that's, we can talk about it.
Will that be on that?
Sure, if you like.
Very nice, that's, that's, that's very good, and it's very, what, what a person wants to leave the counties, the cities to do. And, and he was, he said that at a time that it's, it's certainly applying to do it now. In the, in the case, I would say that, first, what many people would do is that just would close the state parks. And, and because we had to develop very specific problems in our state parks, and we didn't have any resources to be able to do it. And so, it's happened separately, which I, it's a temporary portion of the state parks. So, that, that probably been in the state parks. So, it's broad access to the people on state parks, whatever, so we were well within our, 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 whatever we did.
Bob, we are also in attendance, is our district attorney, Robert Curry. Mr. Curry, you may address the board, or Bob, either one.
That's fine, Joe, I'll, I'll address the board, I don't know where a good microphone is, if they pick me up. So, our county emergency management plan puts me in a very unenviable position of having to interpret, legally interpret your legal opinion and advise the Commissioners Court on the governor's order. In my legal opinion, there is no one in this county, myself, commissioners, or the county judge, or any other person, who has the ability to, the power to overrule the governor's order. The governor's order says, non-essential businesses are closed. Here's your list of essential businesses, it is on the Department of Homeland Security website. Golf courses are not listed. Now, this is not my thought, and I am done with it, because it is causing me great grief. So, whatever this court decides to do about the golf courses, that they think they have the power to do, and that you senators think you have the power to tell them they can do? They're going to do, and that's fine, I am done with this fight. But, my legal opinion is, no one in this county has the authority to overrule, break out of our governor's order.
Can I just address that? And I don't know what order, I'm looking at the order, this, this order says, this order, the governor's order, does not prohibit people from accessing essential services or engaging in essential daily activities. Such as going to the grocery store, or gas station, provided, or obtaining other essential services, visiting, or tuning, or fishing, or engaging in physical activities, jogging, bicycling. So long as a necessary precaution or main thing produces transmission of the virus, and to minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. I don't know, that's the order I have, if it's been updated, I don't, I don't know.
That's the correct order, and you'll notice that golf courses are not listed there. Golf courses are businesses, and they are not on the essential list. I would love to play golf, go play golf, like I said, I'm done with it, but it is my legal opinion, you don't have the authority to do that.
If, if we don't have the authority, I think we put in there, and this is, and this is the governor's order supersedes this order.
Then why do it, why confuse the public?
Sir? I found out, I found out, my heart was down to you, my understanding, and we're supposed to be caught in between like that, and I certainly know, I feel, but I do think that the way Virgil is interpreting what the governor is, is they knows where the specific one. He said exercise is life, he expected, and he's trying to reckon all that, and recognizing that things varies of what county together. And actually, I find that most golf courses, they assess the position close, and, and most of the other, like, the dollar shops and others, remain open. I mean, I've been traveling to Dallas, which has a very strict, like, and somewhere, somewhere, I would maybe go with, but the way the governor wrote, the governor wrote that, the way Virgil agreed with it. It's not a, a, all includes with, it was, I may talk about exercise, and then there's exercise, and whether it's not limited, the law says it says it might be an adult course. And it has a rate more than, and less, because their constant government opinion on what they've done, and their levels go, and that's what the whole piece is all, which is breaking that out, and it's, 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 it's correct by a, a high order. And by the way, the way the board is looking at it, it's, it's all well, again, every conversation I've had, and we have daily, with all the organizations out there trying to enforce various things. From the governor's office, the governor's office, government services, or management, all of them out there talking on interpretation to lead the intent of social distancing. Not to the years of people punishment for the one.
And the only thing I would say, Senator, is that the things that Commissioner Melvin listed are not businesses, walking, hiking, those are not businesses. Y'all do what you want, I give you my legal opinion, I disagree that every other golf course is, is open, I know for a fact that's not correct. I've given my advice, I am simply an advisor here, thank you.
I'm just, it's given my, and I, I remember in the specers, and wait, that's fine, and now my children live on the line, so I could find one, or whatever, and none of us, we said all, so. And, and it's the school, it's the golf, that's just a matter of that, or so that, so we're just, we don't, we don't care if people write it, if I have it, we'll be on charge of the guy, on the road. And there's this, my daughter gets charged for it, so, we, we are, you know, definitely punishable by exercising on exercise here. But I think if your exercise, golf, got faith to do it, then you can do it. The only difference is, is whether there's a financial arrangement involved. I think there's a lot of that, now, I'd say, all was in the intent of what the governor tried to say. And putting out an order, if, if it wasn't like, you know, that's out of Washington, to fill, that was a big problem, but all the other orders were, very possible, it's excessive.